Good morning, everyone. I call the meeting to order. Welcome on this Thursday, October the 19th. Any items from the public? Okay. Motion to approve the agenda as presented. If there's no modifications or changes.
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to approve the agenda for Thursday, October 19, 2023.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose. Motion carries. Purchase order. Any questions for Tracy? No internal budget revisions today? We're good to go? Okay. Have a change in status. A new hire recommendation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections, for Stephen Graham and John Godish. Is that right? Okay. Godish, as a part-time driver with the hourly rate of $17.82 effective October the 24th, 2023. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Skylar Beasley. He is receiving a salary increase due to graduating the academy. And his salary will go from 52,466 to 54,187 effective September the 16th, 2023. Have a change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Philip Butcher. He is being promoted to corporal. His salary will go from 71,206 to 74,713. That was, will be effective September the 9th, 2023. Change in status received from Randy Lilly for Timothy Beaton. Beaton. Adjustment in pay to current part-time rate. He will go from 1550 an hour to 1783 per hour. That will be effective October the 19th. That's today. Any other changes are there? If not, I have a motion to approve the agenda. I was not present on the October 5th meeting, so.
Mr. President, we approve the minutes on the October 5th, 2023.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose. Motion carries. And one abstention due to absence. All right, commission calendar. Sure you've found all this purchase order log. No questions for Tracy back there or anything? Not sure about that? Should hit the button. Okay, we're here today at the 9:30 meeting. Let's see, it's never been there yet. Nothing until Monday, the 23rd. We have historical landmarks. Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority at 4:00. And at 5:00 p.m., Water District. Nothing on the 24th, 25th. CBB at 10:00. And then at 3:00 p.m., we have Senior Services. And on Thursday at 5:00 p.m., Library Board. And 7:00 p.m., Museum Board.
I believe the Water District meeting will be moved to the 26th.
26th? That's Thursday, next Thursday?
Yeah, I believe that's the meeting.
All righty. Nothing else on there? We have a bond release at Rocks Route 9 West. File number 16-04 tied to project number 2301-016 and 2301-017. Bond, our bond number is 1001046842. And the Engineering Department recommends that release. Any questions there? Have a canceled check request from the County Clerk's Office. That's all the things that we got there? Oxford House. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent agenda for October 19th.
Okay, have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose. Motion carries. We have the Honorable Larry Hess for four personal property tax exonerations for office error. Come on up and tell us your story.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, it's, we've got a couple today. It's been a light week for the exoneration, so that's a good thing. Anyway, first thing we got would be office error, personal property. We have a total of four. And for those reasons, that's listed there. And totaled them up, we come up to $555.26.
All righty, can I have a motion to approve the four personal property tax exonerations due to office error?
We'll make a motion to approve exoneration of the office errors from now on, $555.26.
Seven.
And motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose. Motion carries. Number two.
Just have one office error with real estate side. We had two. One was double taxed, back taxed, double back dash. The other had a wrong tax license. And total was close to $1,252.34.
All right, I have a motion for the two real estate tax exonerations due to office error.
Yes, Mr. President. Make motion. We accept the exoneration as presented by the assessor for the real estate officer in the amount of $1,252.34.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. That's it, all right. Board and meeting reports. Mr. Boyd.
Well, this week I didn't have any meetings that I was able to attend. There was a Main Street meeting, and I'm planning to give a robbie and get a follow-up on that, but I was out of town on Monday. So I will fill you in on that next week.
Sounds good. That's it. Mr. Barnhart.
Well, I was in town on Monday, so I attended, well, I zoomed into the Board of Health meeting. And it was pretty much just departmental reports. Kara gave a story of all the places they closed, including the Randy Smith Center, which was kind of interesting.
When did that happen? Because that wasn't mentioned at my partner's review.
Oh, it was last month, I think. Roach or mouse infestation or something. I don't recall what the problem was. I've been asked her how the new all-you-can-eat buffet, China buffet, is doing. I'd be interested in hearing that story. But that goes on. And the other departmental reports were pretty much consistent with, you know, everything's good, running smoothly. And then yesterday, I attended the MPO meeting with Commissioner Catlett. They gave a presentation to Mark Baldwin. It was his last meeting. And the mayor made Andy Blaken's
Alternate.
Alternate, or whatever term is, to attend the meeting, that kind of stuff. I think Steve
Is proxy.
Yeah, proxy. And Steve can give you the lowdown on some of the other issues.
That it?
That's all I got.
Okay. Mr. Catlett.
I had the pleasure Tuesday morning being on WRNR and was all positive. I talked, first of all, about the new broadband possibilities here in Berkeley County, and particularly this phase west of Berkeley County. $18.6 million investment that's going to happen here in the next couple of years. And Gary was on the radio today and followed up with great detail, much better explained than I could, about this program. And, you know, it's really exciting news because hopefully in Back Creek Valley, everyone will have access to broadband within the next two years. And our goal over the next five years is to have everyone in Berkeley County have access, really quality access to broadband. And some folks could even qualify to have it for free. So it's a wonderful thing, and look forward to seeing that take place here over the next several years. Also, Tuesday evening, I had a sewer, sewer board meeting and a stormwater board meeting. Nothing to really report there. We are working, talked about at the stormwater, about potentially the new fee structure and where we're going as soon as we get the impervious records. I told them maybe by the end of October, the first of November.
End of October.
Yeah, that's what I mentioned, so to look at that, so. And then, as Jim mentioned, we attended yesterday the MPO meeting for our area. They are going to increase the fees. The fee that's been in place is right now based on the, like, the census before last, which was the 2010 census. And we were paying 12 cents per resident, which we were paying $12,500 a year to Region 9. That's going to be increased starting in July 1st of next year to 22 cents per resident. And it's going to be based, of course, on the 2020 census. So it's going to increase our rate to $26,856, which is the largest increase in the area, of course, because of our growth. And it's going to be an extra $14,356 we'll be paying. But obviously, it's a fee that, you know, in terms of controlling federal dollars, that can't be spent unless this organization approves those funds. And so it's a very important part. And so it's, uh, it's a very important part of our commission responsibilities is to participate in this MPO. And we're still raising concerns there about Route Nine West and, uh, possibilities there. And, uh, the disappointments that we continue to hear. But hopefully that's gonna change in the next, uh, year or so. And we'll start getting some attention in that direction. It still continues to be our tier-one project in terms of Berkeley County and, and not the MPO area. Uh, that it's a tier-one project, Route Nine West, and trying to alleviate the traffic concerns there.
Morgan County is not part of the MPO.
Yeah, they dropped Morgan County out of the MPO, so they don't have to pay any fee. And, um, my comment was, well, they got a fifty-million-dollar bypass and we don't. So, I thought they quite understand that, how it works.
Concept, yeah.
I guess it's called politics, but, uh, anyway, that's all that I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Eddie, what do you have?
A busy week, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Uh, on Monday evening, at Planning Commission, we had three public hearings, uh, one of which, uh, one project was denied. It was a boundary, um, encroachment. They'd asked, requested a waiver. We're asking to go back to the neighbor to, to get a, perhaps a letter of support, uh, for the waiver from the neighbor. They were, they would obviously be the, the ones most affected by it, so. And that was a relatively quick meeting after that. Parks and Rec, the director close, uh, Director, uh, Search closes on the twenty-sixth. Just saying, closes on the twenty-sixth, sir. They are applying for a grant for ADA compliant, uh, playground outfit to go to War Memorial. On November the eleventh will be the Veterans Day event at the park. It's always a nice, uh, nice morning there to share, uh, with, with those, with those great folks at, uh, at the park. Uh, Mr. Peacemaker was in to present a plan on a skateboard park at the Lakeview Drive, uh, small piece of property that was, uh, left for the Parks and Rec. The Dunn Building renovation, uh, we're, we're a little bit behind schedule of where we were, but also the, the movement along, we're not that far off of, of our dates. Uh, this week, they will be setting the fixtures in the upstairs restroom. And once that's all complete and everything's okay there, then we'll start on the one, on the first floor. Fire Board is in their office, voters are in theirs. I T will be moving today and, uh, tomorrow.
Right.
So, they're all done. I was not able to attend, um, the Dave Report, uh, construction meeting with Gary and Tracy and probably Jack were there. But had an out-of-state tag meeting, uh, which so far, there's been two-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-one, uh, contacts made with the out-of-state tag folks. Uh, they've got ninety new tags and they, so far, they've got forty exempt. And the night shift of the sheriff's office is trying to go back and, uh, verify, you know, the ones that are, uh, exempt and whatnot to, to make sure that, that they're all good. Had a Criminal Justice Board meeting yesterday. They adopted, uh, bylaws and Tracy, I think they've sent those to you for, on file correct. Uh, Dave Report has two-hundred-and-thirty-seven active people right now. Uh, and we have, also have thirty-five children in the catalyst program, which, you know, that's in, in the school system. So, uh, they're, they're busy. Home confinement to, as of yesterday, had a hundred-and-twenty-three people, uh, in that program. And, uh, on, on Tim's math, it saves, so far, that has saved us, uh, financially about two billion dollars to date. Uh, not counting what it's been able to do as far as keeping people working and keeping their families together. But financially, it's been about two-billion-dollar savings to the county.
It's good to hear because about two months ago, the home confinement was down to about a hundred. And so it's up to one-twenty-three, and so that's great. But we did hire an extra officer and hopefully we can get it up to a hundred-and-forty or fifty here in the next couple of months, it's the hope. But, uh, another thing I wanted to mention, I forgot, Jim, Eddie and I attended the dedication of the, uh, nature play area at a courthouse farm Friday last week. And I complimented Park Board on the radio and I did it last week. And again, it was a, a perfect fit for a courthouse farm. A wonderful, wonderful addition to there and the kids just eat it up and they love it and I compliment them on that. And, and the other thing I forgot to say when I was on the radio yesterday, I talked about the twenty-five-dollar exemption on your ambulance fee if you're on homestead exemption. And you had until the end of September to, uh, apply. But we extended that to the end of October because really, truthfully, only a third of the people that are on homestead exemption have taken advantage of that. And what people need to know, uh, is that if you've already paid your ambulance fee at a hundred-and-ten, you can go back in and apply and then they'll send you a twenty-five-dollar check refund for that, uh, additional year. And in the future, you'll be billed at the eighty-five and not the one-ten level.
Right.
So, we, we hope by the end of October, we'll get up to fifty percent of those on homestead. But, uh, hopefully by next year, we get a better, uh, get out with the media better and get, and I, I think if they just do it better in the letter form that goes out, the billing, uh, we can get ninety percent plus of the residents taking advantage of it.
Yeah, and, and on that, Commissioner, we spoke about this, I think, at our last meeting. And I failed then to recognize the staff at the Ambulance Authority. We asked them to kinda pivot on a dime on some of that to make corrections so that the public, uh, you know, was better informed and could, it was much more user-friendly. And, uh, I just, I wanna give them a big thank you for cooperating, uh, and making those necessary adjustments for the public's use.
Anything else? I had, um, one meeting that, uh, the Airport Authority, but before that, Eddie and I attended the, um, recovery hand-up instead of a, a hand-out, uh, meeting or dinner that was there to raise money for, um, anybody that was in recovery that went through the process. And, uh, it was very well attended. I talked to Tim Zaya about that, that that event raised some of the neighborhood of forty.
I heard forty thousand.
Forty, some thousand dollars.
They netted forty, they raised like forty-seven.
Seven, netted forty. And, um, you know, when you start hearing those kids, um, flight of how they, where they came from and where they're at today, I'm gonna tell you, it does, it does pull on your heart, that's for sure. But beside that, uh, the Airport Authority meeting, the biggest news out there is that the Flight Training School was sold to another entity. And they are interesting and interested in purchasing one of, um, the, um, M R B's, um, airplanes, so, to put in their school. So, we're looking into, um, some sort of lease purchase on that. Uh, there's a couple of things that they were talking about with, uh, with the new flight school and how it will affect any student around. But, um, and in conjunction with, uh, of course, Shepherd University has a flight program that they, uh, it's still in the, uh, infant stages, so it's just not quite taken off yet, no pun intended there, but, uh, but they're working on it, so. And on the event, that's about all I got, so. Are we ready? You ready?
Uh, we still got, um, a letter.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, alright, yep, we did, uh, we did receive new application from John Wasm, Rasm Weber for the Berkeley County Development Authority. Bring him in for an interview.
Yes, sir. And just, uh, currently, the only opening that we have on the Development Authority's, uh, by, our bylaws is for industry.
Industry, okay.
So, uh, there's not a.
Representative there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we have a letter of resignation received from Dean Morgan for Berkeley County, um, Roundhouse Authority effective October the tenth. So you have another opening there, H D.
And Jim, we have an opening on the ambulance, uh, cause Dave Irvin didn't re-up, but I, Tracy and I talked about, I talked to Dave this morning. Okay, I talked to Dave this morning, he is gonna re-up. He's a, he's a vital part, yeah.
Yeah.
He's the president of the Ambulance Authority and, and he's been around for a long time and knows what's going on and, uh, you know, we're, we're losing, uh, we're losing one to retirement, uh, one's coming to work here. And then I understand that Brian may be retiring in the next year or so. So, uh, it's important that, uh, we have some stabilization on the board there. And Dave's, Dave's, Dave's great on that board.
Excellent job.
And he, he, he's definitely gonna stay on, so.
And thank you, Gary, uh, for your conversation.
Yeah, we, actually, uh, the Airport Authority has a, a few vacancies that, um, ask a few people to apply for it. But, uh, none have responded yet, but, uh, it'll be interesting here pretty soon because we're right at that tipping point of making quote or, um, quorum and, and not, so. Yeah, we'll, we'll get there. Alright, and we have Honorary County Commissioner, Ms. Hamlin. Eddie? Oh, we're gonna let Steve do it today, alright.
Alright. Not only because she's a Hedgesville High School student, which I remind people all the time, three of our commissioners are Hedgesville graduates, so that's a good thing. But also, uh, her grandparents are here. Her grandfather's my brother-in-law. He's also, he and his wife Pam, Pam is the daughter of Shug Kizner, who was a past county commissioner. And of course, sheriff in Berkeley County, so, uh, and they've done a tremendous amount of work at Rooney Park over the last year. Raised over forty, fifty thousand dollars in private funds, invested in that park a lot of time and energy. Excuse me, Rooney Park is, is its greatest shape it's, it's ever been in its history, so, uh, we appreciate that.
I was by, I was by there just a couple of weeks ago and it was, it's a really nice shade.
And the new playground thing that's gonna get installed here in the next few weeks, hopefully, and, um, the trail's in. And, and we've been getting a lot of compliments about Rooney Park and the people in that area. Appreciate it very much.
Plus the new sign, there's a new sign coming.
New sign, yeah. We'll get that double sign out there. That was, uh, but anyway, Brenna, it's an honor to have you here. Uh, I'm gonna swear you in if you'll raise your right hand for me. And I, in state your name, do swear. Do swear. That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard to fulfill the responsibilities of the Office of Honorary Commissioner. It's a lie. I will work hard.
I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
So, what was that?
You are an actual member up here today. If you have anything you wanna say, either nudge Penny or don't nudge H D, he gets a little irritated. And raise your hand, raise your hand and Jim, our president will acknowledge you. If you have any comments, just feel free to speak, right?
Thank you.
It's great to have you. You know, uh, instead of doing the pledge, we should've let her sing the National Anthem today because this girl can plain flat sing and done it.
Well, we can still do that.
She has the National Anthem and a lot of different things that I've been at over the years and she's a great singer. And, uh, she's a wonderful student and wonderful kid, so great to have her here today.
Very happy to be here.
Oh, yeah, I should give you this, this is your.
Yeah.
And then you can tell us about yourself and what your plans are.
You don't tell, you don't have to tell us what school you go to, it's obvious that.
She can't brag enough.
Yeah.
Well, I am, I'm a Hedgesville High School student. I'm a junior this year. I am associated with my school's Y L A. I am attending the fall conference this year, which I'm very excited about.
Where's that gonna be?
Um, it's gonna be Jackson Smith.
Okay.
I'm very looking forward to it. I have so many students that have been telling me it's such a great way to follow the government and be an employee. Very excited.
Good.
I'm also with our leadership, I'm involved in one of those clubs at our school, pep club, um, key club, interact. Just different ways to better our community in our school as well. My plans, I do plan on taking a medical out and hopefully studying radiology. Um, since my mom works at one of the hospitals, it's, it's kind of interesting. And, but as of right now, I just wanna do anything I can to better our school and that and that.
Well, I can tell right now, you're already veteran in the school, so, thank you.
Good to have you here, Cindy.
Thank you, happy to be here.
We'll take a break here shortly and we'll get some pictures and, uh, make it, uh, make it all official and get you out on the worldwide web by the graces of Matt's abilities over there, so. Alright, thank you so much. Boarding Commission interview with, uh, Shamika Brooks, candidate for the Roundhouse Authority. Come on up. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and, uh, what you, what kind of plans you may have for the Roundhouse.
I am from, uh, I've been living in Martinsburg since two thousand and eight.
Uh huh.
Um, the plans I have for the Roundhouse, they are, it, it's, it's amazing what has happened. And the plan that I would have for the Roundhouse would be to, um, help them get where their look is to go, uh, with the growth and getting the, getting the Roundhouse back intact the way it used to be before everything happened to them. Um, I have some background with, um, owning and operating my own business. So, um, I have a little bit of information with, with the, um, Department of Human and Health and things like that. I just feel I have a lot of things that I could give to the Roundhouse as a person who's been in Martinsburg.
Well, H D is our, of course, the representative for the Roundhouse, so we'll start off. If he has any questions, we'll just kinda go down the, down the board, so.
Um, well, I've been here a long time, nine, nine years I've volunteered there. We have done a lot, it's come a long way. Um, we still have a little ways to go, um, but, uh, do you have any direct ideas or you, you wanna help with fundraising and what? Do you have any specifics on what you wanna do?
So, I've been to one of the, I was invited as a guest to one of the meetings. And there are a lot of things that come up in the meeting. So, um, fundraising, I could definitely help with that as I, um, have been a part of the community in Springfield area. And, um, I'm helping with this, and I know a lot of teachers in that area, very known in the school district in Springfield. So, um, in that area, I can help with fundraising. Um, and then I've seen that there's some, um, restoration things that are going on and some ideas that have been brought up in reference to what to do with some of the things that have been stored. And I think the gentleman's name, he's the owner gentleman, and he always brings up the things that are stored at the Roundhouse that used to either be brought back to life or be brought out into public eye. Um, so they don't be, um, they don't, you know, get forgotten.
And that is some of our mission there, we'll be tying in with the new museum that we're working on. Also, with the museum board, um, we wanna tie the artifacts of the Roundhouse to that and make a little hub in the back, which we've, we've done a little bit of. Uh, but I like that you have the connection to the school because as we get in and further the farmer's market and the farmer market program down there and possibly the full-time market in the downstairs of the Brise Machine Shop, I would like to do a program with the schools to bring in students to learn, uh, retail and, and good customer service as a, as a program with, with like high school kids volunteering and or getting paid to help work those markets. I think that would be, uh, good training for those students coming up. And having ties with school would probably help get those students in there.
Anything else? Mr. B.
Are you a history nut or a train nut or just a nut, huh?
Um, I, I like to say I'm just every type of nut. I have no idea, I just, I'm in, I'm into a lot of things. Um, a little, a little bit of history about myself is, um, I don't know what I wanna be when I grow up. So I've done a lot of things.
I'm in the same boat, I have no idea what I wanna be.
So I've done a lot of things. I've been in the military, I've been a police officer, I worked on Maryland State, I work for, over here in Haderstown at their dispatcher. I've bathed, I've opened up a barbecue, I've run the daycare, I've worked for border childcare and you're very young.
None of that equates to the Roundhouse and I.
It doesn't, but, um, as I was invited, I was invited by Selena Wanamaker. And, um, I'm working with her now, so we're doing a little bit of, um, of the infrastructure for the, uh, the backend of their internet and their, so she has a company called Themcat. And we're a security solution, um, business. So, we're working with them to get their stuff on, online, on the internet, so everyone has a general idea safely, so it's not compromised. To get everything up and running for the Roundhouse, so you can see that, okay, and that.
Very good. Steve.
I don't have any questions about the Roundhouse, I just wanna compliment you for coming forward though and wanting to volunteer on one of our boards. It's, you know, we've probably appointed like forty-seven boards or something, we're always looking for quality people and good people. for quality people and good people, and that, as you told us your background, I understand why you're that type of person. We appreciate the fact that you're willing to serve. Thank you so much.
Eddie?
It sounds like you have quite a history and background of different employment, which is always a good thing. You know, I, I think that's, I think that's pretty neat. Is there a specific skill set that you feel you could bring to the Roundhouse?
Working with the children, I've been working with the children, I feel like I can help with the Roundhouse. I guess in my time at the school system in Spraydose and Spraydome, I had a lot of teachers and people in the area who helped me represent, and I wanted to help them with their children based upon child care or parenting, because it's pretty rough, but also then they don't need it personally.
Well, I think it's critically important that the school system be involved and learn the history of this county and the, the Roundhouse in particular. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of history there, and that, that's what it's for. It's, it's for them, you know, and, and they need to be able to take advantage of it and learn, so thank you for applying. I don't, I don't know where the membership is.
I have one more question. We sometimes, and sometimes more or less, have a problem with attendance and or help with events and things that go on there. Do you have some open time and you'll be able to attend the meetings? We're on the second Wednesday every month.
Yeah.
And then you have some open weekends here or there that you could possibly be an attendee at the farmer's market or some other things that go on down there?
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's been a big problem. I mean, we, we bring people on the board and they come to the meetings or come to every third meeting, and they don't really participate in any of the events that we do, you know, and we don't ask you to be at every event or do everything, but, you know, we need you there some, you know? That's been a big problem. We appoint people to this board and then I think, I, I don't know, resume builder, I don't know what they're doing, but it, it becomes difficult sometimes to get help with things. Just want to make sure that you have some free time, that you're not fully booked up with things that you do, that you would have time to help with some events and different things.
I will definitely have time to help with events. My older two children, they're my youngest child, and well, so we're good.
Sounds good. I'm gonna open up. Ms. Hamlin, you have anything you'd like to ask?
I just admire the seriousness of you because I love your passion for this, especially all the jobs you've taken. Honestly, I feel like that should be appreciated in order to help involve you in the community a little bit. So it'd be very interesting to hear.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anything I could add to that. I mean, you've, everything that you've involved in, that's remarkable. I mean, it's, we all have taken time to volunteer in our start to actually get us, I guess, to about where we're at today, but I commend you in all that you've done, and we don't usually make the, the appointment today, and whenever the need comes up, we'll, you will be notified and we'll go from there.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in. Great to see you.
Have a great day.
Uh huh. All righty. Next up is a commission interview for Jason Stedman, but I see Jason's not here yet. We'll kind of put that off. Yeah, go ahead and have Tracy, or it's on the next page here. Not listed. Yeah, go ahead and have Tracy come on up, but Gary, I got a bid recommendation. Do you want to kind of go to that until Tracy gets here?
So he, your audit services that you know is, is mandatory, and one of the funniest things, and I've been involved in the county government for a very long time, this process for audit selection, for auditing firm selection, I mean, a robot can do it. The auditor's office sends you everything, from the contract to the questions you ask to the answers to how they're weighted, how they're scored, so it's a pretty simple process. On the fifth of October, you opened bids, and there were two responses, one from Perry and Associates at thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and one from BHM CPA Group, Perry and Associates, excuse me, from Huntington, or from Ohio, Marietta, and BHM CPA from Huntington, West Virginia, for thirty thousand dollars. We formed a small committee. There were three of us. We went through the process, like I said, it is absolutely positively answered these questions. Here's how you weigh them. Add it up, the forms are in there, you can see them, and the committee is recommending BHM CPA. They have never audited us before. They have in fact audited, they did Jefferson County last year, but they've done Canal, Cavill, so they've done a county bigger than us, they've done counties close to our size, and they've done counties smaller than us. Their weighted score was the highest score, so that's what the committee is presenting. There's, so it's a thirty thousand dollar fee from them, and then there's a eight percent administration fee by the auditor's office. So it's a thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollar commitment, thirty thousand to BHM, twenty-four hundred will go to the auditor's office. I've spoken to their senior manager, who is also the owner, and he's excited. They've already executed the contract, which is in your signature folder, so if the commission agrees with the committee based on the questions and scoring proposed and answered, we recommend BHM CPA.
Okay. Can I have.
Was there a cost last year? Thirty-two thousand, two, thirty-three thousand, two fifty. The same bid, Perry and Associates, the other bidder, was our, the vendor who did it, they've done it several years. They came in at the same price as prior, so this is the first time that I've seen, and I've been on your audit committee for many years, BHM has, I mean, I guess they did Jefferson and thought, well, honey, you can get to overhear from over there, so, yeah, they're coming to come over.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to approve the audit services?
Certainly. Your service goes, I'll second that.
Got a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. All right, Tracy. Application for WC Cyber Security Grant, is that correct?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
This is a new grant opportunity that came through the 2021 Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Congress introduced the State and Local Cyber Security Investment Act, creating the State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program, which allocates one billion to be distributed over four years. The funding allocated to each state is determined by a formula established by the Federal Cyber Security and Infrastructure Security Agency, and in fiscal year twenty-two, this is not our fiscal year twenty-two, this is the state fiscal year twenty-two, they received three million, and next year in fiscal year twenty-three, it will receive seven million. We're submitting two separate projects, project, cybersecurity project CS zero three sixty, which the grant funding will pay for an NIST cybersecurity framework and critical infrastructure security risk analysis at fifty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars, and the total project is fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars with a ten percent match.
What is a critical infrastructure security risk analysis?
So it's a, it, it, it is, it is, so we do, we do risk analysis, we do risk analysis on the outside end for us, right? So we pay very close attention of what comes in, how it comes in, should it, should it not, so on and so forth. That analysis is from the outside. What this does is this looks at opportunities and vulnerabilities on the inside. So it's bigger and, and a bigger budget item. It's been on our list to do for years. Tracy, in her efforts, I got an email from her a few weeks ago, says, hey, we've got an opportunity for this. You have any, like, yes, we do. So this essentially analyzes internally where the vulnerabilities are if someone were to get in. We work hard and have worked hard, and you have funded us very well to protect ourselves from the outside end. One of the things that we, we really need to get in the business practice of is analyzing and paying attention to ourselves from the inside out, and this will set the stage and get us started, and then we'll, we'll look at probably budget year, if there aren't grant opportunities on this coming budget year, the next, to say, hey, grant funded this last year, thank you, we'd like to fund it now internally if there aren't, it's something we should be doing.
Does this involve any hardware?
It does. It does. So this is a service, Mr. Martin, that, that is provided, and what a vendor will do is they'll put hardware on the inside that actually looks at us and then reports to them what they see. It runs against trends, it runs against specifications, and then they report back. This is a, this fifty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars, that's a, that's a, divided by twelve. This is an annual, they interface with IT not only on a daily basis, but recurring monthly reports and summaries that ultimately pay attention to your round.
Okay. Did you get all that? I'm gonna say I know just as about as much now as I knew before he started telling me anything.
This might be a stupid question, but if they connect hardware on the inside to do analysis, are they hackable?
Of course. That's when you do your vendor selection, and when you pay attention, when you, anytime you let someone inside you and they want to put their stuff in, those are some of the things that you have to do. So part of the grading and scoring and selection process for the correct vendor is they don't bring something in, and those are contracts and things.
And they're insured in case they do?
Absolutely, absolutely, and that, the word you just used, that, in the operative term, isn't, you know, you know, it's not if you get, it's when, it's inevitable. At some point, everyone has.
Yeah, we don't want to end up like the school board did this last year.
No, sir, thank you.
Had to bring that up. All righty.
Is there a motion required?
There will be, yeah.
Do you want me to explain the second project?
Yes, go ahead.
The second project is cybersecurity project VMS three sixty. The total project cost is fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. The grant request is thirteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars with a ten percent match, which is one thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars. This project grant funding will pay for the following, a technical network assessment across the entire network infrastructure.
That's it?
Is there a motion required?
Yes.
I move to accept the, to grant as submitted.
Application for WC Cyber Security Grant.
Yes.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
And I do have, not right now, but I'll come back and talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. Let's take a break here. We're gonna get some pictures and we'll go from there. Thank you. Thank you.[162.72]
...abilities that they have to get us where we need to be. What a lot of folks don't understand, you know, they say, "Well, you can talk to your, your local delegates and senators," and we do that. Where our struggle comes is the other 54 counties to be able to convince those delegates and senators in those districts to understand our issues and to be able to get their vote and support of the things that we need. We've all been provided with the benefits that they have provided to Berkeley County, and it's millions and millions of dollars that they have helped bring back here. Not saying that our delegates and senators haven't done their job, I'm not saying that at all, but I, after speaking with many of them, they will tell you, had it not been for, quite honestly, for summer, a lot of these bills would have died. And so I am one also that will change my position on this as well.
Well, as long as there's major issues, the 1% rollback or the 1% sales tax or home rule, however you want to say it, the rollback.
For the tax living.
The jail bill, any of those major legislative items, and for items that we don't even know what's going on, but Summer does, because she's got her ear to the, to the ground, so to speak, I think it's a valuable service.
And comment next year.
I've been a supporter of it since I ran last year. It was one of my key points when I ran for this position. I've been to Charleston previous before I sat up here and spent some time there, getting to know some people and seeing what goes on and how things do operate down there. And that was a big reason that I was, I was a supporter of that, because I know many of the issues that we deal with up here, and it's a lot for us to be down there when we have to be here. I mean, we still go, several of us went last year, you know, but we can't be there every day, and there's something new happening every hour of every day down there during the session, and if you don't have somebody in there, I, I think you're hurting yourselves just a little bit. We do have our local delegates and senators, but they're, they're busy on their committees and different things they're doing too, and they're not able to float and get in this room with the other 54 counties and whatnot. With the major issues we have going on right now up here in Berkeley County, I think it's critical to have them on the scene.
Daniel Hall has a lot of respect down there too, not just Summer, but Daniel Hall as well, and they're known snakebite.
Yeah.
And they also have a great relationship with the County Commission Association of West Virginia as well, Melanie and her staff, and I think it's the right thing to do for sure.
Okay. Steve, you want to make a motion?
I will, if you want me to. I'd be glad to make that motion that we enter into contract for another year, the proposal that we presented at that cost, the higher access strategy, the lobby for us again.
And gives Jim authority.
It's in my, I've got the signature on it. Give our president, Commissioner Whitaker, the right to sign the contract. Thank you. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. I'll sign it right now.
When's the contract, contract, sir?
December 1st.
It is signed. That's all done, all right. We are going to go into an executive session, but no action will be taken coming out, so it's, it's for personnel.
Mr. President, I'm going to go in.
Well, I was going to ask item from the public first. Any items from the public? If not, Mr. Barnhart.
No.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
You don't have to stand up.
You don't have to.
No, I guess it's been 30 years since I've been in the county commission. You know, I said my father, my father-in-law at that time was president of the county commission, and I was the last one I was at. I'd like to personally thank you, and especially for my granddaughter to see this. We've always tried to teach our children and grandchildren, there'll be a lot of issues you don't agree with or do agree with, but have skin in the gate, be willing to work. If you don't like something, then try to be willing to work to help that. I told my father-in-law 40 years ago, this role that you all have, and at that time I was county commissioner, I think there was three at that time, that is the most unthankful position that you could run for office in Berkeley County. I told my brother-in-law that before he decided to run, because you're going to have an issue that 10% of the people are going to dislike, 90%, you please. Next issue is the same thing, and the only thing lots of times people remember is that 10%. They didn't, they don't realize that you, they agreed with you 90% of the time, but it's that 10% that you're fighting, and I just, I appreciate your service. And I'll also say, some of you I voted for, some of you I didn't, but I appreciate your service, and also I noticed that Mr. Gokeneir and Mr. Cath, and that's why I'm calling you back too.
Commissioner, thank you.
Okay. Call is Commissioner back again.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, anyway. Once you all come into office, now you see things that you disagreed with. Last time, until you walk in somebody's shoes, you don't see some of those things. Now, I still disagree with some of the political decisions, I will. I'm a conservative as far as old farm boy that I don't like seeing the growth of this county. It just turns my stomach when I see some of the things that are happening, because I love Berkeley County, lived here all my life, wanted my children and grandchildren to, you know, live here. But anyway, I just appreciate, I really do, you all's position, and it's a factor as well.
I, I think the statement you made, there's not one of us up here that disagrees with anything you said about liking or not liking decisions that we have to make, but most of the time, there's decisions that we make, they're, I hate to say they're only one way to make them, because we could vote no, but by voting no, it could put jeopardy into the county in another way.
I understand.
And, but thank you for your kind words, and we could talk all day about it, because I probably agree exactly the same things that you disagree with, and, but you're right, being up here, we do get a different view. It's not that the view's not public, anybody can come and see it, that's for sure, and it's, I got to say, it's probably just a little bit more intimate with us up here, because we're, we're given that information all the time, and it's hard to get it all disseminated out to everyone. But again, thank you.
I'm sure you know this, but being a farm guy, there are still, are several farms still alive here, or sort of on edge of being alive. Encourage anyone that you know to get with the farmland protection people. We do have 8,000 some acres right now in protection, and we'd like to get more, you know. That, you know, these younger generation, they don't care about the farm, they care about the dollars, and you, you can't stop the family members who inherit, but if you can talk to the elders before it gets there, you could maybe save a few more of them, you know?
Steve will tell you, we've been blessed in a lot of ways, but we've put 17 pieces of property together in Berkeley County versus dynamic one, the other ways to make up.
No, that's great.
Okay.
Still, I travel all over North America, and it's still Shandover Valley is one of the most precious areas in, in the country, it really is, it's a great place to raise your family.
It is.
We need to keep it that way.
It's tough, but thank you again. So, I already can't vote your motion.
Mr. President, I'm going to go in an executive session for personnel, personnel reasons.
We are, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, or executive session, thank you.
Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I think what you want me to do is motion to recess, and I will do that. All right. Motion to recess.
We are in recess. Thank you.